Welcome everyone to the Sun Prairie Committee, the whole meeting for May 4th, 2021. Time is 5:30. We're ready to begin. Alena, would you please call roll?
Crombie.
Here.
Jacobs.
Here.
Yocish.
Here.
McElroy.
Here.
Walensky.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Stocker.
Here.
Bowling.
Here.
We have quorum.
Thank you, everyone. All council members are present. First item is the approval of the minutes from our meeting on April 20th. Any changes, additions, deletes?
I'll move to approve them.
Walensky will second.
Okay, been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, that passes. Any citizen appearances, Adam, out in the IT, Adam?
We have none.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, now we'll go on to council liaison and committee member reports. Anything to report from any committees? Chair recognizes Alder Crombie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have two things with the, um, the, the city has begun planning process for future shelter and restroom facility at the Smiths Crossing Community Park. And, um, we're asking people in that area, or even not in that area, to be part of the conversation and help shape the direction of this project. It's going to be on Tuesday, May 11th, 2021, of course, 6 o'clock PM. And it's going to be at Smiths Crossing Community Park, which is on 2298 Yellow Daisy Lane, right by Creekside Elementary. And the rain location will actually be at Creekside Elementary School Gymnasium. And then, just a reminder, I think we brought this up before, but the Aquatic Center is going to open on June 19th through August 21st. And so that'll be very exciting for the community. And there is, uh, I could go over the, the pool hours are Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, open swim from 2:00 to 4:00, and then 6:00 to 8:00 PM on Monday. And 7:15 to 8:30 PM on Tuesday is lap swim. And then Wednesday, 6:00 to 8:00 PM is open swim. And then Thursday is 7:15 to 8:30 PM lap swim. So lots of open swim and lap swims. And then Saturday and Sunday, it'll be open from 12:00 to 2:00, 3:00 to 5:00, and 6:00 to 8:00 for open swim.
Great. A sign that things are coming back. Thank you for that. Any other reports? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to unfinished business. Consideration discussion of possible action on the waiving of permit fees for lead lateral replacement projects. And I would like to start by recognizing Alder McElroy, who's spearheaded this event, or this project, with some updates that have occurred since our last meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I want to start by, um, something, research that is, I am in no way bidding from request financial assistance for District 1 or District 2 residents. Lead lateral plant. Uh, do not have a lead lateral at this point. 20 years ago, I had it replaced at my own cost. I'm, I'm moving forward with this strictly at the request of the District 1 and District 2 residents who are currently this. I personally thank Rick Wicklin at SPU and his staff, who have worked tirelessly to provide a way for some of the costs that are associated. I also want to thank city staff, um, who have worked diligently with SPU to move this forward. And I also want to thank Alder Yocish, who did a lot of research on this, provided me thing. At this point, uh, Mr. President, we want to recognize Rick Wicklin, so he can discuss this further.
Thank you, Alder McElroy. Mr. Wicklin?
Yes, sir.
You have a lot to, lot to let us know about.
All right, um, I can give you a, a background of, of, I guess, I, I sent something out to you, President Stocker, and I believe you forwarded it to the rest of the council concerning a background as to where this program started, where it's, uh, where it's kind of advanced from. We, we had originally, um, we've been giving a grant to customers for 50% of the overall cost, uh, which ended up up to $2,000 maximum. And after we approved that this past year, we were given the opportunity to apply for a, um, a DNR Safe Drinking Water Loan Fund Grant that is going to come before you on the 18th of May, uh, in emailing back and forth with Aaron. I just received uh, this afternoon, the, um, the final paperwork. We're, we're going through, we may have a couple minor changes with the DNR to go over yet, but you'll be receiving, you'll be receiving that and considering that at the, at the 18th, um, cow meeting. And, uh, what that is, it's a, a grant for $562,500 for the 225 lead lateral replacements. Originally, that amount was $450,000 because it just included the $2,000, the $2,000 grant per, um, to each of the 225 replacements that we estimate to have. Um, we have since been, uh, negotiating, going back and forth, um, with the DNR, and they are, at this point, willing to, get, uh, reimbursed for the permit fees for the street opening, the plumbing permit, the electrical permit. There also, if, uh, if the city, um, does the sidewalk replacement work, they will reimburse for that. And it appears they will also reimburse for, uh, any tree removals that, that come up that, that have to take place. So, um, Adam supplied a separate memo, um, to the, to the cow, I believe. And in that, it kind of goes over the process by which the city would do the work, then they would invoice SPU. SPU would then, um, send, uh, each of those invoices to the DNR for reimbursement. In that, uh, when we send them in, we will send the contractor invoice and the City of Sun Prairie invoice as a combination. The DNR wants to, wants to have each, each one individually, uh, sent to them, uh, for reimbursement. So what this does for residents, basically, it, uh, it, it still puts them on 50, responsible for 50% of the construction work, but none of the permits, none of the, none of the things that are in the, in the street right away work. And, uh, so, so it does help them out quite a bit. And, uh, hopefully this is good for everybody. Um, the DNR came to bat for us. It took, uh, took a few back and forth with them, but, but it's been, uh, it's been a, been a good process and looks like, the only thing I'll say is that the DNR money, uh, there's 63 million a- available right now. The DNR has indicated that they're going to, um, probably dole out in the, they've awarded about 40 million this year. And so what that'll do, the ones we don't get replaced this year, we'll, we'll roll into next year for funding. Um, but we don't know, uh, past next year, not sure what will, what will be the case, but hopefully we have most of them done by then. No guarantees, but we'll certainly, certainly try hard. Um, city staff's been great to work with, Adam, um, Brian Flannery. Appears we got, uh, we're gonna have a good process going forward, been a little stumbling blocks along the way. Um, but, uh, Alder McElroy's been, uh, wonderful to deal with. She's taken a lot of the calls along with then calling me or, and, and then, um, having me interact with the customers too. So been, uh, been good so far. We've gotten over a lot of hurdles and, uh, and then we appear to be on the right track here. But, uh, based on, based on this report, I'd, I'd recommend no waiving of permit fees. Just let them go as normal, and we will get reimbursed for them from the DNR.
Thank you very much, Rick, for that report. Does anyone have any questions on this? Chair recognizes Alder Jacobs.
Uh, Rick, I just want to know how you work your magic. What's the secret? Did you pull away the curtain? What happened?
I schmoozed him. I, I don't know. It, it, the, the DNR rep, it, it was, it was kind of, it took some clarity, you know, of, as to what the DNR would, would be willing to give and what they would approve. And so I just kept, kept, uh, running scenarios by them with which, uh, we potentially would, would submit reimbursements. And, uh, and ultimately, we, we gave them a call, um, early this afternoon and went over this one final one. Is it possible to get the sidewalk replacement based on invoices from the city doing the work, along with, uh, the tree replacement also? And, uh, that seemed to go over well with them, and, and it's something that they, they were willing to accept. I think it's, uh, it, it's good to communicate with them and, and give them a call direct and email them direct, and they've been, uh, they've been, they've been good to deal with in this process. I'm sure we're not the only, um, strange situation or unique request. I'm sure a lot, a lot of people, given this funding, um, have a lot of requests and special requests that are going through, so.
One, one more question for you, Rick, and I'm sorry that, um, if I'd have thought of this, this morning, I would have just called you and asked you, but based on your experience at, at SPU, do you think there's a way that we can induce all 225 to do this? I mean, I think we all agree that this is a good thing they have done, right?
Yeah, and if they, if they wait, uh, further than two years, um, it could end up that they're, they're not going to have some of their fees covered then too, if, if the DNR money runs out, but it, um, or they don't offer it past 2022. So I think we're going to use that as a tool to, to say, hey, it's, uh, it's recommended you do it now. It'll be the least, uh, least costly and to the most to your benefit right now, so.
Least costly and the safest. So is this SPU that's going to take the lead in communicating with these people?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, definitely. And I, I wanted to, uh, I, I wanted to, I forgot to mention somebody. And, uh, Mark Leonard thought he's chopped liver through this, but I appreciate the discussion with Mark and going over, uh, we, we, we tried to get the, the sidewalk replacement in as a, as a fee, and, and, and Mark go, wouldn't let us do that because it's construction cost on the city. And so, uh, so he straightened us out and got me back on the right track. So, so I appreciate that from him and, uh, and sorry for, sorry for missing you, Mark.
I'm, I'm drying my tears right now, so I, I, I feel much better, Rick. Thank you.
Mark and I are becoming good buddies, whether it's, uh, property sale, whether it's lead laterals, seems like, uh, we have a lot to, whether it's well 10, we have a lot going on right now, so.
Thank you very much. Uh, Chair recognizes Alder Yocish.
Yeah, I just want to express my gratitude to Rick and Adam and Brian and Mark and Alder McElroy. Uh, certainly, as, uh, Alder Jacobs said, we, we certainly share the goal of, uh, getting rid of these lead pipes in our community. So all the hard work is, is very much appreciated, especially by the homeowners, but also by the community in general.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Alder McElroy.
Thank you, Mr. Just this, I won't call you at least.
You're breaking up, unfortunately. Unless it's just on my end again.
I am. Yeah, it's not.
Maybe you could try it again.
I might suggest typing in the chat, and then the president can read it.
Or she might, uh, want to log out and log back in. I'm not sure if that is, uh,
That's, that's what I'm gonna do.
Yeah, while you're doing that, while you're doing that.
Killing the video too.
While you're doing that, if it's okay, I'm gonna read a comment that came in from, from the outside. Uh, this came from Marie True, 161 South Street. The item is on permit fees on lead lateral replacement. And Marie's comment is, "I hope that the city council can see the value in assess, assisting homeowners in replacing the lead laterals to their homes." There was no disclosure of lead pipes to us when purchasing our home in 2006. We only learned, we only just learned of the problem, along with some of our, I apologize here on the, along with some of our neighbors. "After seeing the horrible crisis in Flint, Michigan, I feel it is in the city's best interest to avoid the same outcome. Waiving a few permit fees in the very specific instance should be an easy decision for our council to make. The cost will still be substantial for the homeowners, that I can assure you of, after receiving two bids for the work on our home. Why not help the burden and ensure these families have access to safe drinking water?" So that was, that was the one comment. Okay, we have Alder McElroy back.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to say to Rick that I promise I won't call you for at least a week.
Oh.
On, on vacation, albeit.
Yeah, but you answered your phone while you were on vacation.
You're lucky. Thank you. No, it's no big deal. Call me anytime. I'm just kidding.
Thanks, Rick, again. I appreciate it.
Okay, if there's no other comments, I would, looks like Alder, Alder Bowling, yes, Chair recognizes Alder Bowling.
Thank you. So the, one of the things that I was wondering about, and we don't have to answer this now, but I know that there's a three-year sunset in regards to the support for folks who, to actually take advantage of the funding. And I'm wondering, um, I'm interested in the conversation about if people do not have these replaced, and thinking about the new homeowners, and actually that comment you just read about disclosure and how important that is. Um, my worry is for those homes that don't have them changed out. If there could be some process or considerations for the, the new homeowners when they move in. Um, just something that I was thinking about when I was reading this through.
Very good.
Just a comment.
Yeah, very good point. Alder Stevens, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Um, my question is more to how we would set up a motion or what we are actually going to vote on this evening. I do like this proposal better than what was proposed two weeks ago. Uh, I think it's a better solution for all. Um, but we don't have any new documentation on our council agenda to actually vote on. There's no new resolution, so I'm not entirely sure if we're voting on the old, and it's a, a negative motion to, you know, a vote to deny. Um, so that we can move forward with the new idea, or how you want to handle this?
Yeah, very, very good point, Alder Stevens. And that was a, a discussion point, uh, today, and I think Mr. Oppenheimer is going to answer that one because it was a question whether we were going to have a vote or no vote, or, like you say, a vote to deny. And it was all depending on what the appetite was of the council tonight. However, I'll, I'll turn it over to Mr. Oppenheimer.
Yeah, ye- yes. If I could help out, uh, Mr. President, and Alder Stevens is, uh, you're right, the current, uh, agenda does not provide a, a solution in, in, with where we'd like to go. Uh, my understanding from Mr. Wickland is that there is an agreement that needs to be approved, and there needs to be a resolution approved. So two, two pieces of legislation, both are not noticed on the committee of the whole agenda or the council agenda. So I've asked Rick if we could do that at the May 18th, uh, city council meeting, uh, which Rick, Rick me- mentioned, uh, a little bit earlier. So if the council is comfortable with this, we would not have it on the committee of the whole moving forward. We would just put it straight onto the council agenda on May 18th. Um, that satisfies the, you know, the noticing requirements, because we can have that all set up for May 18th. We'll have the proper documents in place at that time, and the city council could just act on those two items, and we'd be able to move forward as outlined, uh, by Rick, uh, tonight, and the memo and other documentation you have.
Okay.
So, Mr. Oppenheimer, in order to proceed, then should we deny it in this meeting, or just leave it off the table?
Leave it as discussion.
Yeah, you could just move forward without taking action on the item. We understand what the council would like to see at their May 18th item, or at their May 18th, uh, meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Yeah, I just had a couple of questions too, and actually Alder Bowling asked the one as far as the sunset date. Uh, just so we're crystal clear to our residents, uh, there is a three-year sunset date. However, the funding that Mr. Wickland has pointed out would be available possibly through, for the next two years, not certain in the third year. Um, I also believe there's approximately 14 permits in flight right now that someone will be getting back to the residents. And then I think we need to be crystal clear on the sidewalk work. If the residents wish to go outside of the city to have their sidewalks done, it's on their expense. However, if it's city staff does it according to our standards, then it will be covered under this grant. Is that correct?
That, that's how I see it. If it's my, I, I'd ask Adam to, to give his opinion on this, but that's how we would see it, because we need, we need the city invoice so that the DNR, I've explained it to the DNR, that it's going to be city work, and the, the reimbursement will come out of that. And so that's what they've okayed.
Okay, so we'll have that all, all written up, and so it's crystal clear to those 225 people affected, is that right?
Yes. But, yeah, I mean, it, it is a concern, um, from the standpoint that, yeah, we haven't, we've only identified 100 of these 225, and we have to identify the, the remainder. And then once you identify and send them a letter, then yeah, from that date, it's, uh, three years from then. So we're gonna, we're gonna try and aggressively find the rest of these here and, uh, and send out some notices and hopefully get people to, uh, to act on them. Um, we're doing everything from putting signs out there after they get replaced, so hopefully, uh, hopefully people, people take notice and, and, uh, do, do the right thing here.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, very good. Uh, before we move on, I would also like to publicly thank, um, Mr. Wickland, Mr. Flannery, Mr. Schleicher, the whole city staff, and especially Alder McElroy for spearheading this. And, uh, I think we have a win-win situation, so thank you very much. Chair recognizes Alder Yocish.
Uh, just a quick question. Rick, could we get some kind of update in a year or something on how this is, is going? Either, you know, by email or to the, uh, to us, uh, in person, whatever you think is best. I just, you know, I, I guess I'd like to know how, how this goes. Uh, it seems like it's going to be a challenge to get everybody all 225, uh, done. So I, I, I would like to have some kind of update in the future, if that's, if that's appropriate.
If, if we do a bad job at this, Alder McElroy will be updating you every two weeks. So, so no, we'll, we'll give you a, we'll give you an updates that, uh, that you guys have a comfort level where things are headed and what the progress we're making.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we'll move on to new business. First item is a consideration discussion of possible action on returning to in-person meetings. This referral came out of a, uh, note that Alder Polinski sent out. It's a very good question, as far as what everyone's appetite is, how we can safely return, and I stress safely. And to ask what the feeling is, at what point do you think we can, we can return, and, uh, under what conditions? And under what model, whether it's all in person, if it's hybrid, if it's the council meeting in person, in hybrid, but, um, people wishing to address the council still come in via Zoom, what are the options? So I'd like to open it up for discussion to see if we could come up with some solution. So Chair recognizes Alder Crombie. You're on mute.
Thank you. Uh, so with, if we were to go hybrid, I guess my question would be, what type of, do we have the technology to go hybrid? I don't know if there's anyone that can answer that now.
That's a great question, and I've, uh, Mr. Oppenheimer, I know we had that discussion, if you would like to take that.
Yeah, I, I think we, Mr. President and Alder Crombie, I think we are, you know, i- if we know what the city council would like to see, uh, when, when we talk about hybrid, uh, we can, can do that. Um, Alder Jacobs is aware that Sustainability Task Force, we kind of started off that way with a kind of a hybrid model, some in person, some, uh, virtual. So if we have an understanding of, of what you'd like to see, um, we certainly would work to, to make that happen. Uh, if there was any delays in, in being able to get there, we certainly would let you know, and perhaps we could alter the, the schedule accordingly, if we needed to do that, uh, in order to get the right things in place. Uh, but we, we believe that the IT staff, uh, is capable and the technology is available to, to do something like that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think hybrid is going to be around for, I'm not going to say forever, but, uh, you know, I know people have different, uh, commitments and the flexibility of being able to be somewhere else, but still join the meeting. I think not only helps them, but helps the council. Chair recognizes Alder Jacobs.
Aaron, I have, I have a question for you. You know, sustainability, we did this, but in sustainability, we had no, you know, matters that were regarding finance or official business, you know, so I, I guess from a legal standpoint, is this something that we can do?
Yes, it is something, yep, it is something you can do. Uh, so whether, whether you think it's, uh, in, in the interests of, of the parties involved, that's certainly something that, that for you, for the council to talk about, but certainly from a, a, um, a legal perspective, you certainly can do it, yeah.
You know, so from a legal perspective, we have an ordinance that if a council member doesn't show up, the police can go get them and give them a ride. I don't know if you all know this, we actually have that in ordinance. Um, will, will we then enforce bandwidth upon the council members? That's, no, we still have the police pick them up, I guess.
I leave that to the chair. The chair decides, um, who is, uh, truant.
Yeah. Oh, we have Mr. Leonard up here. Would you like to comment on that, Mr. Leonard?
Well, Attorney Oppenheimer has already, uh, placed a flag out there, so I, I don't want to, uh, to, uh, do anything to disturb, uh, his, his legal opinion. Um, I would just say, I would echo Aaron's comment with the caveat, "We can do this if we do it the right way." We might need to make some changes, like, uh, like Alder Jacobs brought up. We might want to, uh, say specifically in ordinance that, uh, our quorum, uh, is considered to be people appearing both in person and virtually, for example. One of the, one of the big issues that surrounds, or we've wrestled with during the pandemic and virtual meetings is the, uh, the law is slow. You know, we're, we're always slow to catch up. They, we, once we get there, we make these decisions that last nearly forever. So we haven't caught up very well, and quorum is always something that has been considered to be an in-person requirement. So my understanding is that the newest edition, uh, the 12th edition of Robert's Rules is outlining some, uh, possibilities for going forward. Uh, there is some guidance out there from, um, from the Attorney General's Office. There's some guidance out there for the league. So I think Aaron is correct that it can be done. Uh, and he can be first chair on this. I'm willing to be second chair. I have no problem with that. But I'll do my best to assist him, uh, with drafting the ordinances, and, and we'll get there.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. The Chair recognizes Alder Jacobs.
This is a question for the second chair, Attorney Leonard. Um, can, can we, um, can we make a stipulation by which we, we set up for a certain time period that we would accept hybrid, that we would accept in person or virtual, you know, for the next 365 days, you know, renewable upon choice? Kind of like what we did with closing down the, uh, with City Hall, right? We set it for a certain amount of time and?
Well, when we, when we work with ordinances, you know, we typically put sunset provisions in if we wanted to have, you know, to automatically end, right? I guess I'd want to think about it a little bit, and as we work through, uh, our ideas about where we want to end up, uh, we would have either a ordinance that ends itself with the sunset, or we could go back in after a certain amount of time and make a different decision. So I don't, I don't know that one, one choice is more advantageous than the other. Uh, it, I do tend not to like making changes in ordinances, uh, at different times because it appears to be sort of whimsical, right? You know, we're, we're going back in and we're changing things, uh, and people have a hard time relying on, you know, the law being stable. So we want to consider stability as well as the, you know, the changing times in it, if that helps.
Yeah, I think that, um, the reason why I suggested a sunset is I think, I'm gonna look at the pictures here. I think Mary and Steve I think Mary and Steve and Maureen and Teresa and I would probably agree that. We've had our best interactions when we've been live face to face. And we've also had the best opportunities for people to come in and contact us to discuss, you know, issues that they have. And um, I know one time we did this, and it was for Alder Stevens who was away. And my suspicion is she could probably knows better than anybody else that being face to face was better than that, although that was better than nothing. So, you know, that's why I'd like to say a sunset, and then we can choose to renew it or not renew it. Thank you.
I'm, I certainly take your your point, and um, I I know the the instance you're referring to. And we did make some special arrangements for Alder Stevens to get in and vote. She was wanting to be able to vote for. Um, you know, president, vice president, that kind of thing. And so we we felt at that time that the accommodation was an easy enough accommodation because. It didn't have repercussions in the broader world. It was more of an internal procedural rule for our council. So thank you.
If I if I could add, Mark, is it make, one of the reasons we changed to virtual was the emergency order.
Correct.
That be a tie to the timing issue that Alder Jacobs is is referencing is that. As long as the emergency order is in place that this this hybrid could be in place. Uh, but once revoked, then it then it would be, it would, it would essentially take care of both items.
Yeah, yeah, I, you know, I I think there's going to be a lot of discussion on this all over the state, well, all over the country. And so I I I kind of have my ear to the ground. I know the mayor has his ear to the ground. Uh, I think Dane County Cities and Villages is going to be doing some training. Uh, I don't know how many of you are attending, maybe all of you are attending, and so you're going to hear a lot of commentary. Uh, Paul Ferguson is one of the presenters at that meeting. I know Paul well, talk with him on a fairly regular basis. If uh, if he doesn't know it about open meetings, it's probably not worth knowing. Uh, Andy Childers from Von Bresen is also presenting. Uh, he's very expert in this area, so you all will, if you attend that, you'll have. A lot of knowledge that will help you make your decisions going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So for those of you that have not been to City Hall, especially in the chambers, uh, council chambers. Um, around the dais, there are. Plexiglass petitions that would be um on the desk between alders and the mayor. Um, there is plenty of hand sanitizer around and such, so I guess. The question is, under what conditions would you all like to see us get back together in person? Who would like to go first? Chair recognizes Alder Stevens.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, for me personally, I am up for doing it very much like school board is right now, where it's staff and board members. Um, if we were to open it up to the greater community, I would like some capacity limits. Um, that that's just where I am at comfortably.
Mm hmm. Thank you for that. Chair recognizes Alder Polinsky.
I I follow Alder Stevens one hundred percent. Um, I just feel that. We seem to be able to communicate better. Um, work on the decisions that we need to make better when we're sitting at the dais and City Hall. Now, that might be me as an old timer compared to the youngers on City Council. But um, I think that. Being able to be in the same room with the alders, be able to, you can sense more what's going on. And as we move forward, especially close to budget time, I just would like to see us start to make those moves. As far as inviting the community in, um, I struggle a little bit with that. We need to really make sure that. They can communicate with us, but I'm not sure about having our council chambers. Full of people, although very seldom it does that happen unless it's a real significant item, so.
Right. Okay, Chair recognizes Alder Crombie. You're muted.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I I feel the same way as Alder Polinsky and Alder Stevens. Um, only I'm a little, I just want to warn people, you know, science is telling us this, that we're not out of the woods yet. Um, the recommendations, we still have to listen to the recommendations from the C D C, Dane County Health, the WHO organization. And I don't agree with inviting the community in until probably September, October. It, we just have to listen to science and what their, what their recommendations are, but I am fine with us meeting. Um, and I'm also, I think that if somebody doesn't feel comfortable meeting, which I think most of us have been vaccinated. And if we don't feel comfortable meeting, we should still be able to have that person call in, of course, so. But yeah, I think we should, we get more out of it meeting in person, um, because we're all zoomed out, to be honest with you. Um, I would rather meet in person. Yep.
Okay, the Chair recognizes Alder Bowling.
I do the unmute thing. Um, I I I just want to say like, after May fourteenth, I'm good. I'm good for joining an in person council meeting. Um, I want to echo the concerns of potentially waiting until August, September. And the perspective I'm coming from is from eighty eight and immunized compromise, uh, compromised people who even may have. Been able to be vaccinated but still have to be careful. Um, or folks who are unable to get vaccinated to be able to attend as um for to speak as um. As part of the public, that's, those are the folks that I'm concerned about. I'm not less, you know, for myself, but just making sure that. We have um opportunities for everyone to be able to contribute, ask their questions and um participate. Who may not be able to show up physically.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, so we've heard a lot of input on this, and I'm getting the feeling that. The in person is is the more popular idea. I guess the question would be when? I, and thank you for giving out a date, Alder Bowling. I mean, potentially, it could be. The last meeting, let's see, that would be the eighteenth, because I think you said the fourteenth, you're good, so. Yes, the Chair recognizes our mayor. Welcome, Paul.
Steve, I'd appreciate the opportunity to comment on this.
Yes, sir.
My my concern isn't only us, but it's who else gets drawn in to facilitate our meetings? For example, does somebody from the media center need to come in? And they might be a younger person, they might be a person with young people in their household. Or how about our city clerk staff? They're they're younger people. And uh, two of them have young children. Are we causing one of them to be out in elements where they wouldn't be otherwise? So I would urge caution if we, if we were strictly up to me, I would wait until after Labor Day before I considered coming back into person. That would give us a lot of time to prepare both technology and the facilities. And see what's happening in the country. There are areas in the world where this epidemic is out of control. And there's some fear that that may spawn new versions of the virus that our vaccinations may not protect us from. I'm not in a rush. I have said to Steve, we had a meeting about this last week, and I said. You know, whatever the council decides, I'll be there, I'll go with it, but. I'm protected and I'm not worried about me, but I think there are people that we should be worried about that may be in there besides the community coming in. And then there's some speculation that having our meetings done virtually is actually. Enable more people in the community to participate, to at least view our meetings, not necessarily participate. We haven't noticed any uptick in that. So maybe we're providing a good service just with what we're doing now. That's my thought.
Okay, thank you very much, Paul. Okay, any comments? Where where should we move on this?
I guess I, because I'm unfortunately, fortunately, one of the other was the one that brought this up initially. Um, perhaps we should put this off for a couple of months and come back and visit it um early summer. By early summer, June, July, midsummer, and see how things are going and see what the comfort level is with council. Um, so we could make a decision before we get into the budget process.
Okay, thank you. Is that the consensus? I see a lot of heads nodding yes. Okay, okay, we will put this off then until, should we say mid-June? Bring it back on as a discussion item. Okay, thank you very much, and thank you for all your comments. Appreciate that. I think together we make the best decision. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for reiterating your thoughts, too. Okay, next item. Is another referral, and this one is a consideration discussion of possible action on student representatives. To sit on the council. Um, again. Just to reiterate what the. Purpose of it was, um, again, uh, the mayor spoke that him and I had a meeting, it was on. Uh, bringing the council back to in person as he stated, but it was also, what would this look like if we had student representatives? Paul brought up a good point. He said, you know, Stevie said, it's a. You know, students sit on the school board to give direct input into the school, but what value would they have on the city? And I said, well, this is their city also, and how many times are we making decisions? Uh, whether it's going to be a new park, we might be developing a new park with something that's a total one eighty. From what they would enjoy and use, and we're not hearing that. And here we would have direct input as they are citizens of our city also. So um, the school board, as you saw in the packet, Mr. Oppenheimer sent out, what their policy is. Uh, non voting, uh, junior and a senior, um, it's assumed the junior will become the senior representative, but they do have to. Reapply, so to speak, and um, so. What does everybody have is, you know, how do you feel about having our youth represented on our council? We would probably be somewhat of setting a precedent in this. I don't think there's a lot of communities that do this. I'll say that upfront. Why? I'm not sure. I think it's, again, I think it's a good enough idea. That's why it was, I brought it forward. But I would like to hear everybody's feedback in a, in the open session here. Chair recognizes Alder Polinsky.
Here I go again. Usually I've been really quiet, and tonight I'm kind of breaking back into my old. Uh, realm of things. Um, I think. Uh, that with the level of decisions and the communications that we have to give. At committee of the whole and city council meetings, I'm not sure that that's a place to put high school kids to be part of. I mean, I certainly want to give them every opportunity, but um, I think that what we are doing is so very important. That we need to stay focused on us as council members. And how we are responding to those in our community that are relying us, relying on us to make those important decisions. So I am not in favor of this at all.
Okay, thank you for that. Chair recognizes Alder Stevens.
I am in in agreement with Alder Polinsky. I think it would be appropriate to have a student on youth and families, which I believe we do. Um, and possibly Parks Commission might be another area. Um, I think the library board is already looking at doing this as well. Um, of having a student representative, um, so that, you know, we're curating for everyone. Um, but on city council and understanding budget, I just think we might completely overwhelm and. I hate to say bore, but you know, just really not engage. Um, students at that age, it's a lot of information to take in, and they just may not show up.
Okay, very good. Chair recognizes Alder Yokeesh.
Uh, I guess I would second that. I I do really like the idea of maybe having more uh uh involvement of students in committees. I think that would be a more appropriate uh way to get input from students, so I I I really like uh. Uh, that idea, and I I think I'd I'd favor that over involvement in city council as as a whole.
Okay, and I think I saw Alder Bowling's hand up and then Alder Crombie.
I'm I'm neutral on the council. I like the committee idea. I have been on um. Boards and commissions with youth, which is so rich in hearing their their input and ideas and insights. That otherwise would have left blind spots, so I just wanted to share that. Directly working with youth in in this capacity has been beneficial to the outcome of the decisions.
Yeah, thank you for those. Alder Crombie. You're on mute.
Alder Bowling, you said exactly what I was going to say. I'm neutral on this. Um, I think though that I've been on committees and commissions where the kids have been involved. I think there's just going to be more opportunity for, we need to provide more opportunity for the kids. To uh, and more to be engaged with like the Youth and Family Commission, we have, I believe, three to four. Or I think four right now, and um, the Parks and Rec Commission, we've talked about having kids on the commission. And um, the, you know, and there's other committees, commissions that we possibly like the library. Commission or the library board, board. Um, so I just feel that. To get kids involved, that we need to have them provide opportunities for them, but I'm neutral, but I'm not. I I don't think the council is the right place for them.
Okay, thank you for those comments. Alder Jacobs, I think I saw your hand up.
Yeah, so I think, you know, all these arguments I've heard are really good arguments um to to do committees rather than the council. But I would also like to add that the committees I've heard people talk about are ones that we say would directly impact young people, and that and that's great, but. I would think that we need to actually move beyond that. I'm thinking about something that Alder Guyan often says. You know, he says, oh, this is a fifty year decision. Well, so we're making decisions for the youth, we should have them in on it. Um, I'm thinking in particular, the Transit Committee. And um, and and also, you know, when we're deciding whether or not to put up buildings or apartments. These, these are the people that are going to, you know, they're going to live with our decisions. So I'd like to see them represented on those commissions in particular.
Alder Jacobs, that's exactly where I was coming from. This is going to be their city, and they should have the opportunity to. Speak to it and design it accordingly, and that's that's where this impetus was coming from. Chair recognizes Alder Bowling.
One quick last comment. Also to establish trust in regards to the systems in which the youth are going to be leading one day. I think that um sensing from working with some, the youth, at least in my sphere, there is. A and I wouldn't say anti establishment, maybe that's a little too strong, but. There's there's a trust building that needs to happen with the 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 positions in which we're holding right now, so it'd be nice to do that at a younger age, too.
Thank you for those comments. Yeah, the the whole uh idea behind this was to, you know, enhance and build our future leaders so they'd know what. They were getting into um, leading the city, and if it's on the commission level, I think that's great. And I would encourage the commissions to, you know, actually talk about it when you meet and see uh. See what the thought is as far as having our youth sit on those. So. I'll assume right now this isn't going anywhere in the council, but from the feedback, and I thank you all for that, that it'll appear on the committees and commissions. Okay, next item, consideration discussion of possible action on change order for the reconstruction of the Wetmore Park parking lot. Uh, who would like to take this? Mr. Schleicher?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so as everyone knows, the uh city splash pad is is currently under construction. Um, with a scheduled opening date of early July. Uh, throughout the construction, uh, it was noticed the parking lot has become in in disrepair. It's already an aging asset and was scheduled for replacement in in the C I P. Uh, we believe it'd be advantageous to replace the parking lot as part of the project and have it done before the splash pad reopens. Uh, we got quotes from our contractor to do that work. Uh, the quote in. The the quote in the memo is that ninety-one thousand nine hundred forty. However, we did work with the contractor this last week, and to get a credit for some for some of the concrete work that is going to have to that would have been done anyway, to get a credit towards this additional concrete work. So they brought the price down to eighty-three thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. It would would remain on schedule, still open in in July. No no concerns there. This would be a a change in in scope and in budget for this project. However, the overall capital borrowing for the city would not increase. So this individual project budget would would be higher, but the overall borrowing for capital projects for the city for the year would not change, so no no additional funds that way. Be happy to take any questions on this project.
Chair recognizes Alder McElroy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Adam, when was this parking lot paved the last time? How old is it?
Don't have the exact year. I believe it's about twenty-four years old. Just that it was up next year for replacement, so it's between twenty and twenty-five.
Okay, so it was up next year for replacement?
Correct.
Okay, all right. That answers my question. Thank you.
We may have lost our chair.
Oh, no.
Take the reins, Marine.
Okay, I'm taking the reins. So do we, are there any other questions from our council on this?
Alder Stevens.
Any entertained to have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve for staff recommendation.
Okay, do we have a second?
Alder McElroy seconds.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
I think we need to actually go through.
Yeah, we have to do a round call, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Can you please leave the roll? Yeah, sorry about that.
No problem. Crombie.
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Yokeish?
Aye.
McElroy?
Aye.
Polinsky?
Aye.
Stevens?
Aye.
Stacker?
Aye.
Bulleye?
Aye.
Thank you very much for that. Thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you. This, yeah, I have to figure out the connection here. Okay, so next item is report of the council president. And for those of you that have been on as long as I and maybe longer, you have not heard a report of the council president. However, there will be council president reports moving forward. First report actually is on a meeting that I had, and again, for full disclosure to the entire body. I updated, as I'd promised, Vice President Crombie on the discussion. But I wanted to know that the mayor and I and Mr. Oppenheimer had a meeting the other day talking about reports of the council president, the mayor, and the city administrator. And the fact that I thought there was enough going on in the city that we would at least have something to report on. And as far as the report of the mayor, the mayor, and I don't want to paraphrase for you, Paul, but felt that this is our meeting, and he would like to kind of take a backseat in this one, but then have his full report in the council meeting, and I respect that and I understand that. So going forward, if it's all right with with this group, we'll have, and I hate to have, I shouldn't say hate. I very much dislike to have items on the agenda that we don't address. We'll remove the report of the mayor from this. However, if the mayor does have something, he can always add it to the agenda. That way, we won't have to go through no nothing to report. On the other hand, Mr. Oppenheimer is more than happy to report on items going on in the city. As you know, every week he gives us a glowing report as far as where he's been and where he's going as far as the city administrator work. And some of that is internal, of course. And but I think some of that is also items that can be shared by our, you know, shared with not only us but our vast viewing audience, and I think it would be of interest to them, whether it's, you know, the splash paddle open in Wetmore Park finally, and you know, it come and enjoy, or, you know, something happening as far as Arbor Day that I I just saw in one of your reports. You know, the community might want to gather for that. So I think there's enough happening that would be, this would be a good vehicle, and we're all about wanting to communicate more. I think we're, we won't see anything as far as the the mayor report. I think the city administrative report is a good place for this. And so with that, I'm not sure if I framed it up well enough for you, Mr. Oppenheimer. I would like to move on to the report of the city administrator.
Thank you, Mr. President. I thought the the characterization of glowing, I thought, was was very good. So I do appreciate that, sir. So there was, there was three items I wanted to to mention. One is our work session for May twenty-fifth with mass transit with the BRT and discussion around local routes. One, I wanted to make sure that we've been working with the city council to get that scheduled. So hopefully, May twenty-fifth works at five thirty. We've gotten some confirmations from most of you that you're able to to make that meeting. We'd like to have you all present, if possible, for that May twenty-fifth BRT meeting at five thirty. We received a letter this afternoon from the Transit Director, Metro Transit Director, that local route service, that capacity will be available to us if we would like it. So we have that commitment from Madison Metro if we'd like to exercise that. So that will be a discussion on the twenty-fifth as well as BRT service. As Council President Stacker mentioned, that would be something of of interest to the community to to be aware of, that the discussion will occur then. The second item with Alder Jacobs's indulgence, I would just reiterate the fact that we just wrapped up the Sustainability Task Force meeting at the end of of last month here on April twenty-ninth. That was the final meeting, and there'll be a report provided to the city council at their May eighteenth meeting, will be at the committee of the whole, along with an ordinance that I've worked with Alder Jacobs on to create a permanent sustainability committee. So for those interested in sustainability, that may be something they want to tune in on, tune into, to hear the task forces work over the past year, creating that final report is over a hundred recommendations of things that we can do as a community in the area of sustainability. So that may be something to be aware of. And the third and final item is that summer registration opened today for in-person recreation programs, and we had a very high volume of registrants today. Over twenty thousand dollars in program fees came in today, which means a lot of folks have registered for programs. And so for those that are interested in returning to in-person recreational programming, that opportunity is available to them starting today to to register. So those would be my three items. So hopefully, that covered some ground.
Thank you very much for that, Mr. Oppenheimer. And you mentioned a very important point. Well, all of them are important, but I I would just like to thank Alder Jacobs for taking the lead on the Sustainability Committee and or the the task force, and look forward to seeing the great work from the Sustainability Committee. And hopefully, there'll be at least one youth on that committee. So moving on, referrals. Does anyone have any referrals? Okay, since it's on there, I will make some referrals. First referral is one that came from a constituent of ours and happens to work at SPU. Nicole Bush sent a note. This would be a referral to to the Public Works Committee. And it's a referral that apparently Dairy Queen is doing a great business. They're doing such a great business that cars sometimes through for lining up for the drive-through go out onto Main Street, and if they're not onto Main Street, they are cutting, cutting across cutting across one of the streets specifically, it's not Frederick Street.
I think it's Jackson.
Yeah, it is Jackson. Yeah, Jackson Street. And blocking cars from getting through on Jackson, which further backs up cars onto Main Street. And I'm not sure if there's anything we can do about it, but like to make that referral on behalf of Nicole to the Public Works. Chair recognizes Alder Yokeish.
I almost forgot. I have a referral also to the Parks Recreation and Forestry Committee. I had a constituent bring up the issue of lighting for bike paths. And I've had some initial discussion with Christian Grissom, and so I'd like to refer that to be looked into by the committee.
Okay, thank you. And I have, I have one more referral, and that came out of our our latest negotiations as far as refuse and recycling. There were some comments made that, again, I I want our our city to be looked at as as totally transparent, above-board and everything. And the comments were such that here we have a multi-year contract, but it appeared as if the RFP timeline was very short. Now, I'm not one to know how far out is a proper timeline for an RFP. But if it's going to be a multi-year contract, I would like to make a referral that we bring it back to this committee for discussion to, I guess, find out what everyone feels would be a proper lead time in order to float an RFP before the contract comes due. Rather than have a two- or three-month window, maybe we need a six-month window. I don't know. But rather than send notes around, I would like to just open it up and be fully transparent and open up for discussion. So that referral will be coming back to this committee to to look into. Okay. Any other referrals before we move on? If not, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Jacobs will second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Thank you very much, and we'll see you in approximately half an hour.
See you at seven.
Thank you.